I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone and welcome everyone who is watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Present.
Trustee Gatt?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Riker?
Present.
Trustee Wigginton?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, everyone is here. Next is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting and the public hearing on April 13th and May 7th, 2024. I would ask for a motion to approve those sets of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any question on the minutes or corrections? Hearing now, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience on agenda items only. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Comments from the audience are open. Going once, twice. Comments from the audience are closed. We've been at old business. Any old business come before the board? Okay, right into new business. The first is the approval of the consent agenda. Trustee DeBoer?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Rick, are you here to talk about the festival? Do you want to at least mention it? Because it's on the consent agenda, we're not going to vote on it.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to be here in case there was any questions about either any of the items, actually, any of the reappointments or the use of Tower Park for the church. So, we appreciate the use of Tower Park and we'll have a really good artist this year. Stars Go Dim is the name of the band, and it might only be the lead singer, but they're a very popular Christian band being played on the radio, so, thanks. Any other questions, let me know.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll on that.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. And just, I'd like to call out Greg Fletcher, Floyd Wambacher, and Mickey O'Neill for agreeing to serve, so each one of those were appointed on the consent agenda to the Police Pension Board and the zoning board for Mr. Wambacher and O'Neill. Next is Resolution 2024-07, a resolution approving a bid from R.A. Cullen &amp; Sons for MFT seal coating. Trustee Riker, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. There were some questions about this resolution originally, so I think counsel, it's in our best interest to hear from you first, if you don't mind, Trustee Riker.
I was going to defer to him anyway.
Perfect, yes. If you remember at the last meeting, we deferred this. There was some discussion about IDOT and how they approved contractors with a certain capacity limit for various types of work. Porter Brothers was the lowest apparent bidder. R.A. Cullen was the only other bidder at a higher amount. Porter Brothers, it turns out, has an IDOT capacity of $1,500,000, and it was alleged that they had exceeded that capacity this year. I conducted an investigation of that, found out that they were way past $3 million in jobs already awarded, and there's probably other, I think, that's out there. I reached out to Mr. Porter, Matthew Porter, and I want to make my email correspondence with him part of the record. And I just read it, it's relatively short, so bear with me, because I think it's important to have this in the record. I emailed Mr. Porter on May 15th. "Mr. Porter, I am the village attorney for Village of Peoria Heights. I reviewed your bid submission to the village, including the IDOT certificate and your affidavit of availability. Upon investigation, it appears that your company has been awarded far more in the way of contracts this spring than were disclosed on your affidavit. I've attached publicly available minutes, including minutes from Woodford County where the same issue was raised. Your company was past the IDOT limit with only the Bureau and Whiteside County contracts, and the Bureau, Whiteside, and Limestone bid awards should have been disclosed on your affidavit. I'm contacting you to see if there's an explanation or if we are missing something. I'm also writing to tell you that final determination on the bids will be made at the village board meeting on Tuesday, May 21st, at 5:30 in Peoria Heights Village Hall. Please plan to attend if you would like to address this matter." And then, later on that day, I received a response from Matthew Porter. He says, "Yes, we are currently at our max prequalification limits. We are confident we can handle the project. We currently do $4 to $5 million a year in chip seal work. The city has the right to override that qualification if they would like. If they choose not to, I understand. I'd like to at least show the city how much money they are overpaying going with other So, it was my hope that he would address the affidavit, which is concerning. It's not just a situation where they're two, almost three times their IDOT capacity limit. There's no excuse been offered for why they signed an affidavit that didn't disclose that. Absent other people alerting us, we never would have known, and potentially could have found out that, you know, they can't do the work because they're overcapacity. To me, that is more than adequate grounds to award a contract to R.A. Cullen. Ultimately, it's up to the board. So my recommendation is to reject the low bid as not a responsible bidder based on the affidavit and the capacity issue, but I'll let the board make its decision.
I have a few questions. During your investigation, did you find any bids or projects they had bidded on that they did not complete?
We did not. You didn't take... No, that's really hard, because that's not necessarily public information. It was a lot easier because we knew where they had submitted bids, to check the minutes, and, you know, so we didn't want to spend hours and hours of time doing a deep dive. My focus was really on the affidavit. When you submit an affidavit with a bid, to me, that's a critical piece, and these prior contract awards were weeks before the affidavit, not days where they, you know, may have missed it. I mean, they knew when contracts were awarded.
Yeah, the affidavit is concerning. Had they been honest, would we have accepted the lower bid? I mean, if they're able to do the job, then I don't understand why we would go with the higher bid for.
I think you could still do that tonight. Now, whether or not they have the capacity to get the work done, or what happens if they don't get it done, that's a policy decision for all of you. Counsel is telling you that, well, the way I look at it, you have a low bid, and then you have a lowest responsible bidder. It's terms, but I think the board could award this either way.
Have we used Porter Brothers?
I'm not aware of those.
Have we ever used them before?
Not in my history here, no.
Have they ever bidded on anything before?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't believe they have bid on any work here before either.
Okay. And previous years, which companies have bidded on these projects?
Cullen has bidded, and I can't recall, a couple other companies that I believe have done it.
This was for seal coating?
For seal coating, yes.
Who did it last year?
Cullen.
Okay.
Here's my problem is, first of all, they lied, okay? And if they go and bid off more than they can chew, are they going to be able to get the job done? And I just am really worried about giving somebody something... I mean, how much over are they on this, counsel?
Two to three times?
His email says between $4 and $5 million, their capacity is $1.5 million. So they're two to three times past their limit.
Yeah, and I'm afraid they wouldn't be able to get the job done, and then we're stuck.
So when IDOT sets that limit, why is that set? Like, IDOT saying, "We don't think your company can handle more work than this," or like, what, like, how?
I think they look at the number of employees, the type of number of pieces of equipment that they have. You know, that number doesn't necessarily mean if they have $1.6 million, they're not going to be able to complete it. It's really an IDOT estimate of the limitations on that company based on all of those factors. So, I, you know, absent the failure to disclose in the affidavit, it's a fair discussion. You know, do you think this company can, you know, do 50% or 100% greater than their IDOT capacity? They're far past their IDOT capacity, and again, it troubles me that they, you know, hid that from us.
Sure. So, it's more like a recommendation from IDOT?
Absolutely.
To, like, the public?
It can be way... Absolutely. It's not a prohibition.
Okay.
It's... Recommendation is a good word.
Okay. And so there's no, like, repercussions for, other than us denying the work? They have no repercussions for not being honest about the work that they currently have?
Theoretically, IDOT could probably take action against, to decertify.
Okay.
But it wouldn't affect us.
Okay.
Counsel, I want to thank you for all your research on this. You really looked into various things, so I think that was impressive how you found all that. What I did with the work that you had found, I reached out to Limestone Township Supervisor, and informed the mayor that I was going to be doing this, Derek Romer. He's a friend of mine, and he put me in touch with Randy Neal, who's the Highway Road Commissioner there in Limestone Township. And I spoke to Mr. Neal about it. He also set me up with Patrick Meyer, who's their engineer for the township there. And so, when I was talking with all of them, and kind of explaining how weird the situation was two weeks ago when we were faced with this in a public meeting, and how disappointed I was that that was going on in public, he had said that, he asked us, "Do you use MFT funds for seal coating?" And that was the distinction between Limestone Township, who does not use MFT funds for their seal coating, and us, who do. So, he said, "When you use MFT funds, there are more strings attached to that, including the IDOT capacity limits." So, I, you know, as far as the disclosure on the statement, I don't know how that came about. I don't know if it was an honest mistake in the fact that they, on this, for things that they did for Limestone, that they didn't use MFTs, maybe they thought... I don't know. But regardless, on our form, on our affidavit, it was incorrect. If it's, you know, a mistruth or whatever, it's just simply incorrect. So, you know, I'm fine with the motion on the floor. I understand that the rate's a little bit higher, but I think because of the information there... And I will just say, I know we were talking about Porter Brothers, the conversation I had with Highway or Road Commissioner Neal in Limestone, they said they had very happy with Porter Brothers, they've always been fine with their product. So he didn't have any disparate, you know, negative things to say about Porter Brothers, but I did explain to him, you know, our situation and how we arrived at that. So I don't think it's like, it's not a personal thing, it's just it was wrong in our form. And as far as responsibility and responsible bidder, which is kind of what we have to do, I think the motion on the floor makes a lot of sense.
When do we anticipate this work being done? Is that...
I believe there's a finished date of August 31st, maybe, if that's correct, I think.
Anyone else? Okay, so the resolution and the motion is to approve R.A. Cullen &amp; Sons for the MFT seal coating. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution 2024-08, a resolution approving emergency interconnection, an emergency interconnection agreement with Illinois American Water Company. Trustee Riker, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Okay, let's see if I can do this right. I make a motion to amend this. They have asked for five additional days. So the total time for completion of such work will be no more than five days. They're actually asking for 10 now, so I make a motion to amend.
I think technically the proper...
We need to get the motion approved first.
Oh, the... Sorry, that's... I told you I was going to mess it up. Okay, so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now you may go ahead and make an amendment.
Now I make a motion to amend it.
And so we're amending the work requirement in Section 2 of the agreement that says that work will be completed within five working days, and Illinois American asks that that be changed to 10 working days. Am I correct?
Yeah, I believe. And this work is already done. It's already completed, so it's kind of a non-factor.
But it also applies to maintenance of...
It may be something in the future, sure.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. But they did agree to a half-day rate instead of a full-day rate if we open it up, which...
Were you going to...
Let's get on the number of... We've got the amendment. Did anyone second the amendment?
I was going to say, second.
Okay, we're on the amendment.
We first need to vote on the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Weisenberg, you seconded the amendment?
I second both of them.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is on an amendment to change the language in Section 2.
Point of order, I'm sorry, Mayor, and one thing real quickly. We're giving them 10 days. I know we've had issues in the past, I think this is fine, but we've had issues with the past with road closures, and will this affect our roads being closed for 100% more days?
No, I think this will just affect this interconnect agreement, just that piece of equipment area.
If we need that connection in an emergency.
Got it. Okay.
Good question, though.
If it needed some kind of repair or something, it would... Only that thing would be affected.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, Madam Clerk?
Okay, this is on the amendment to change the language in Section 2 to no more than 10 working days. Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, now we're back to the main motion, as amended. Go ahead, Superintendent Chandler, I think, Trustee Riker, I ask you a question.
I'm sorry, I just wanted you to go into a little explanation of what it is that we...
Yeah, sure. So, when the village starts running low on water, we have to maintain pressure by water being up in the towers. If we cannot get the water up in the towers, we cannot maintain pressure, therefore, we need an emergency service to provide the citizens with water, with safe water, and that is basically what it is there for.
And we currently had to utilize that, correct?
We did already have to open this thing one time.
And if that wasn't an option, we would have had a village-wide boil order, correct?
Yeah, we would have had very low pressure and a village-wide boil order, yes. But luckily, it was in time.
How often does that happen?
It's happened twice since I've been here for 20 years, so... And that was one of them.
Okay.
That I remember. But, very, very useful.
What caused the water pressure issue?
Well, it wasn't the water pressure, it could have been. We have one big line that comes up the hill that feeds our towers, and that line had an issue, and we needed to fix it.
Okay.
And it unfortunately took longer than we had.
And the old valve, correct me if I'm wrong, there was some real doubts on whether that would work.
Right. It was no longer reliable. They hadn't, you know, they just, they couldn't... They weren't comfortable with it, and obviously, we weren't comfortable with it, so that's actually been disconnected now as well, too. So, it's out of the loop, and the new one is there.
Okay.
And thanks to Illinois American for supplying us with water during that period.
Yes, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, we are on the main motion, as amended. Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. All right, Ordinance 2024-1730, an ordinance creating an additional Class A1 liquor license within the corporate limits of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeBoer, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-1730. Second?
Go ahead, Trustee DeBoer.
Okay, so, I was not privy to sit into a meeting to get to meet the owner of this business, but I've heard wonderful things about a woman named Megan, I'm going to try not to butcher this else. She owns a business called Happenstance Event Rentals, and she is looking to have a mobile bar situation in the Pabst parking lot, very similar to how Klink ran theirs. Now, it wouldn't... She's not looking to compete with Klink or take over what Klink does with their mobile service, but she has a whole different business plan that Trustee can speak... Trustee White... My goodness. Because they can speak to us about. But she's looking at doing, like, beer and proseto, maybe some mocktail for events and coming up to Village Hall, so very niche and, like, cute to go with, like, her business that she already has. So this wouldn't be, like, a full new bar opening up. She does have a space at Pabst Blue Ribbon right now, and she's just looking to do outside events with that. She has currently one trailer and looking at a second vehicle, so the alcohol would be served out of those more, like, at a street level. Anything to add, Trustee Kazam? I'm sorry.
No, you did a great job.
Yeah, and so, I mean, compliment to Sam Hefford, she, I wouldn't say, she's doing something similar, very similar, but not copying him, but we met with her, like her, she likes the Heights, and I think she'll fit right in. So, I need the license to give to her. I'm asking all of you to add another license so we can get her in business.
So when they serve this at the mobile bar, sales tax is collected from that, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, yep. And she's not, you mentioned that she wants to do this in the Pabst parking lot, I think she also wants to do this in other locations for special events outside of the Village of Peoria Heights, but also inside the Village of Peoria. She's very supportive of this village, and she was talking about Tower Park and doing, you know, all kinds of neat events, the Taste, that type of thing. So she does public and private events?
Right. And not only the sales tax, I mean, she's creating some jobs, and then she also has to have a bricks and mortar office, so she's renting space in the Pabst building, so, I mean, we're seeing some other benefits from that as well.
One thing, and this is kind of an accounting issue, but that's... Trustee Weisenberg clued me into it. So, they're paying sales tax, food and beverage tax. Are they paying BDD tax on their mobile, or is it based on where they set up, or is it based on their physical location? I mean, because they're going to be located in the BDD.
I think maybe this has to do more with, and correct me if I'm wrong, the address of their business. So if their brick and mortar business address is in the BDD, then they are being charged that tax for everything that they sell anywhere.
Okay, that's right.
And it is, that's where their address is listed.
Yeah, okay. Good question. Anyone else?
And also, that would, I'm sorry, just so we are clear, because this has come up in the past, let's say she would take this trailer to some other community, Peoria or whatever, the sales tax still comes back to the Village of Peoria Heights because her business address is here.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, thank you, that passes. We would be at miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous to come before the board?
Yeah, I was reading the news the other day about, what's in politics, but they had an article about cyber attacks against water utilities that are apparently on the rise. I don't know if that's something that is in our purview, if our water systems are connected to the internet, if we have...
It is, we have a... There's a program to go through as far as, you know, cybersecurity and stuff like that, yeah. I mean, we will get up to date with it. It's not...
Okay.
It's something that's part of an emergency response plan and that type of thing, which we currently have, and we'll work on updating it.
I can't remember what the federal agency was, but they said, like, 70% of US water systems were not compliant, so, which was kind of shocking, but...
Thanks for bringing that up. Any other miscellaneous?
Just one quick thing. I just wanted an update from the last meeting. I've had some conversations with Director Aldrich, as well as Trustee Kazam. We're going to meet this week to just address and iron out some issues regarding the residential redevelopment program, so I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you.
I'd also liked, and I will, Director Aldrich will comment on this, but we had many meetings last week, one for the active transportation plan, which was a very productive meeting, where we toured the village to try to decide... There are many key stakeholders involved, and we had comments from each of them to carry this active transportation plan onto the next phase, and I can't remember what the other meeting was, you'll have to remind me, because I've already been to...
Parking.
What?
Parking.
Parking, oh, parking meeting, yes, exactly.
So, yeah, active transportation plan, I thought was a very good meeting with what we call a steering committee, a group of stakeholders, really good representation on that meeting. Thanks to CityLink for loaning us a bus and a driver to drive us around, I think that was really productive. So, our consultant is Lardner Klein, so Jim Klein was here for that. So, I believe we're anticipating a public meeting, a more open public meeting next month in June, I believe, potentially on June 20th. Haven't decided a spot, but very potentially right here in Village Hall, so we'll continue to work with that plan. But I thought a lot of great comments came up during that meeting. And then parking meeting was held last week, about 20 folks, I think, I counted, came to that meeting, and I thought a lot of great comments related to that, too. I think Mr. Bailey is going to prepare a summary of comments and things for that meeting. He was taking notes and writing them on our board, which I thought was helpful at that meeting. So, again, I thought a very productive meeting. And related to that, regional planning is actually having a special transportation study invitation that was just issued last week, so I think we're going to apply for that for a parking study. I'm not sure what that scope is at this point, but it'll start out with how many spaces are available, and if they're public and private, things like that, because I think this may turn into a kind of a public-private partnership in a lot of ways, you know, to really maximize the utilization of the parking spaces. Before we get into building big parking decks and things like that, so I think that's a good next step forward. The other, just information, Mayor, is that I did get contacted by Congressman Sorenson's office last Friday, so we were not successful with our community project funding earmark, basically, for the lighting project on Galena Road. They said it was a good project, just really limited funding available to them. There are still possibilities in the Senate, so we also applied for that same project through Senator Durbin and Doug...
We maybe need to reach out to Senator Durbin's office and...
Yeah, so, again, it's a project that's kind of far in the future because it's linked to the IDOT project, but it'd be good to get, you know, some funds to get that started, for sure.
Thank you for the updates. Any other miscellaneous?
Mayor, one quick thing on kind of police-related. Neighborhood Watch meeting was last night. It was a fairly close-knit group that was, that turned out, but I want to alert, and chief, I don't want to steal your thunder, if you want to, but at the next, at the next Neighborhood Watch meeting, which will be in two months, it'll be in August, where
Neighborhood Watch meeting, which will be in two months, it'll be in August, where there will be testing, the police will be testing and demonstrating the drone right here in Tower Park. Hopefully, we'll have some good weather. So if you want to see the drone in action, that will be in August at our next Neighborhood Watch meeting, so that's exciting.
What's the date, Trustee?
August, I worked this down, no, I didn't. So it always is our, the August, or the day, the Monday before our third meeting of the month, so that would be 12, 12? Okay, 12.
What do we use the drone? Are we currently using the drone?
Correct. We've used it in a couple different situations. We've used it to locate a child, we've used it to apprehend numerous suspects, the one I mentioned that ran across...
Oh, I did, right.
Ran across the ridge.
Right, we were able to follow him.
Yes, we found him on the river, so we've used it a handful of times. We've assisted Peoria in a couple searches. It's really impressive, you know, it was $20,000 for a reason that we, it was purchased through grant money, but one of our operators has been asked to teach the class locally, he's that good, so Officer Carrier will be here, and he'll go over everything, and it's very impressive. It's not just, it's not one of these drones you just pick up at Sam's, this thing, this is, it's very impressive. So if you can make it, should come out and...
Twenty-six, chief.
Oh, 26. And also, and also, we use it proactively, it can take, it can take measurements of, like, the school, so if we ever go there in an active shooter, we can pull up all the specifications, and we'll have, we'll have all that on the, on the screen, so it helps us, and we're doing that through all the businesses.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, it's really, it's amazing. I didn't know all the capacity that it had until I went through it with Officer Carrier, but if you can make it, it is definitely impressive, and if you can't, we're gonna try to get it, a couple, a couple local demonstrations here for the community, so...
How many, how many operators do we have that can use it, just one?
We have three.
Three.
One on each shift.
Oh, great.
What time is that? Six o'clock, six o'clock?
Anyone else? Just congratulations to Mike Bailey. Mike was inducted into his high school Hall of Fame last week, so good job, Mike. All right, we would be at general comments from the audience. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes.
I'll make one comment.
Yes, go ahead, Mr.
I traverse the new mall with the corrections, or not corrections, the addition of the rail on the ramp, it's a go. It's the best thing they could have done. I would have once again, non-skid script, because when you're in a wheelchair going down a ramp or up a ramp, your wheels can tend to just rotate on concrete, whereas those scripts can be a little quicker to go, but they did a great job on it.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and thanks for letting us know. Anyone else? Any other comments on once, twice? We would be at payment of the bills. I would ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to pay the bills. Any questions on any of the bills or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?